And additional choir, softer.
So I'm Max Olson, I was sophomore as well, I'm the district council, I'm the superintendent, and district director liaison for student council, which is an elected officer, executive office position, so as part of that, we need the school board representative committee, so that's why I would be here at every meeting, and Emma's position will take another person, Carly.
Excellent, and then you've got a little recording, what's that student council's doing? If you'd like, come to the podium, share with us what you've got.
Alright, so first and foremost, biggest thing student council has been facing with this planning for the upcoming year, I'm sure that much of your club and organization will echo that, better for the next academic year, and then we've also, the student council itself, we want a reorganization, and a lot more organizing before getting any structure, so we have several committees, we have fundraising committees, and things along those lines, basically to ensure that we're being effective, more effective and impressive. Also been working to improve, in terms of student governance, which you guys have been constituent relations, basically, that's making sure it relay the concerns of students to administration and so on, and the biggest thing we've been planning for, in addition to the upcoming square, is homecoming, and that's gonna be a positive shortly, so that's the next thing. We've got a lot of dedicated, motivated student council members that are ready to take their new, sort of reimagine student council on, they're ready to get their, so that's all I've got for today.
Excellent, welcome Max and Emma, and whoever joins you in the future, we're glad to have you, it's a wonderful dead dump for the school board. Alright, public comment is next, I picked up a sheet, we did not have anyone sign up to speak to us, so we'll go fast back, and we are up to highlights, Rich and our administrators.
Yeah, call our principals up, we've had a busy part of the week, the end of last week, and today with teachers, other staff members, you're in, feeling some training to work to get ready for the start of school year, so we'll have our principals share what's happening at each of the schools, it looks like Sarah is in the works.
We forgot to tell Mrs. Sheedy that you take turns with this role at the four-kay three level, so she's just, was just ready for tomorrow's call. She was ready for today, so now it's me. And so that you don't have to hear the same thing three times, I'll kind of summarize, in our, in our world, like in every building, we're working really hard to get ready for the start of the school year, this year especially, we're implementing a new math curriculum, I know the curriculum committee adopted, board adopted, so we had some eye-ready math training, and all the materials are up to the schools, shout out to Julie Musgrove, the instructional coaches, Jessica Sheedy, they do a lot behind the scenes to help implementation go off, and so teachers are excited to dig in. We are also going to do some Act 20 training, I know there was a board presentation this summer about Act 20, and so the teachers have been gathering and meeting in grade levels with some of those teacher leaders to dig into Act 20 training, and then we've done some of that too, we're two days in, we have four left to go, so everybody's learning, which is exciting. We're getting ready for open house, at our level that is on Wednesday, and our teachers typically are sending out like signup genius, so families can pick a spot, that's working really well in the district for the last couple of years, so that it isn't everybody showing up at the same time, and teachers have a better opportunity to really have family conversations with the families and the kids, so excited about that, and of course, first day of school, which will be in the seventies at this point, so everybody got a hold of that, that'd be amazing, so yeah, just really excited to be there. Alright, what is new at Northside?
Genius.
Mr. Rayburn, right, and Mr. Die, which then leads to lots of navigating, right, a lot of questions, so Jeff and I are learning right alongside the staff at Northside, as they're trying to figure out what our expectations are. One of the things that we're doing at Northside this year is looking for opportunities to bring our community and our staff families together, so Culvers Nights, which is something that they've done in the past, but our staff will be volunteering at them, that's why I'm guessing the students at Northside will be excited to see that, and then our next upcoming event is our fourth grade ice cream social, that's coming out September 12th, and that's being met, I don't know if you're right now, you're kind of knowing you guys, so we'll see you there, and then just to reiterate a few things that Sarah had said, but thank you to our teaching and learning, Julie Musgrove for lining up, professional development for our staff, and student navigating curriculum.
Hello, everyone, middle school is excited to welcome back many new faces, two weeks ago we had Making the Move, which is our transition event, three days, three separate hour fifteen-minute sessions, most of our students are using a locker combination for the first time, and so there's lots of patience that comes along with you skip the second number twice, and navigate the schedule moving across the building, in many different classrooms, many students have the up-down schedule, one class upstairs, the next hour downstairs, and then the next hour exactly upstairs. We have 207 students and tenants for Making the Move, which is probably our highest percentage that we've had since I've been an administrator in this role. We also had a welcome for any of our incoming seventh grade families, we offered parent guardian sessions alongside of those Making the Move sessions, so that can kind of answer those nuts and bolts about what middle school looks like, just some chances to ease the nerves of both the adults alongside of the students. Tonight we had a school supply drop-off, which is built in as a calmer way to come to the middle school, open house can be a hustle and bustle between parking and 520 students coming to drop off their stuff and meet the teachers in a one-hour time frame, can be pretty overwhelming, so we did a three-and-a-half hour chunk after school today for families to come in, and that helps us iron up some peaks as well, so we're looking forward to a break here at middle school, thank you.
It's good evening, and so at the high school, as everybody else is, we're planning and getting ready for next week, we're waiting for students to return, though we have a number of, all, all sports are now well into session, and the place is, is hopping right now. Couple, this last week, we did work, all of our BLCs worked on such a standards project they were working on, improving our assessments, and also today, all staff started Chromebook training, and those staff that were working freshman, that we worked through the pilot this year with Chromebooks, there's some, you can work with staff and showing some different tools that they'll have available, try to help the students and the freshmen of the year. Also tomorrow's late cruise, our incoming freshman will come tomorrow, when cruise sessions are all set to go tomorrow, we have probably 50, thank you for leaders, we're working with our incoming freshman that starts at 7:30 tomorrow, the advisors, Casey Die and Devin Hammer, are working very hard to prepare for that program tomorrow. Also, the last few weeks, as Max and Emma shared, we were very, very proud of student council, this, this revamped student council is very, there's a lot of energy, a lot of excitement, we're very proud of it. And finally, on Friday night, we're pleased, just a reminder that we have our first home football game, but it's also a very special night, we'll be having a special ceremony at halftime, where we'll be acknowledging the new stadium, and then have a Navy dedication for Jerry Schlapp, Jerry's family will be arriving, we'll also have a contingency of some of the coaches who have coached with Jerry over almost 40 years, any coach will be there that evening, and we will be acknowledging all those that helped make that, the project happen, we're very excited about that. And I wouldn't be remiss, but I'd also definitely mention that we learned today that we are one of five area games this Friday night, the Quick Trip and Wisconsin Dairy Game of the Week, so we are voting, they're reporting on five different games, and one of the most votes by, I think 1 o'clock on Wednesday, if I'm not mistaken, I'm looking at care since, the most votes will be the game of the week, so we should add a lot of extra attention. Our play days will trend, I think it's going to be a packed house as it is, we'd love to add another element to it, it'd be a great team for them, so I encourage people to go and vote, and information will be on the website very soon, and it isn't already, it will be on there very soon, thank you very much.
And then I just want to highlight a couple of things, as the principals shared, a lot of great things happening across our schools with both students and staff as we get ready for the start of the school year. Last week, we had our two days of new teacher training, on Monday and Tuesday last week, it's one of the smallest groups of new teachers that we've had since I've been here, but a really hard-looking, dedicated group, and we're going to be adding, in staffing report tonight, adding a couple of people to that, we had some late transitions, so we'll be officially hiring a couple of more people, and then nobody will get started tomorrow with board approval tonight. And then a couple of the principals mentioned the math curriculum and the Act 20 reading training that has taken place, so Julie Musgrove, our teaching and learning department has done a great job in planning and then putting in presenters for that, Julia Gershensky in our student services has done some very training this week for our student services staff, and you've heard from Ross, the person earlier, about all that he's been doing to get ready for the annual meeting, and then I also want to highlight some departments that aren't represented here, but have been doing a really great job of getting us ready for the start of the school year, our tech department, this is always a busy part of the year for them, as they're getting staff and students ready for the start of the school year, our school nutrition team, our building and grounds team, and Kerry Clevo working with both communications, community outreach, and safety, in getting everything ready for the start of the school year, and finally, our HR department this time of year trying to get the last minute hires in place, so it really has been an excellent first week of getting everybody back, and I think Sarah Stewie had the nail on the head that we're happy that the temperature today and tomorrow is coming this week rather than next week when all the students are back, so we're looking forward to getting students back in our schools and a great start to the upcoming school year.
Excellent.
I would just like to put out there a thanks to the administration, teachers, staff, district office, and coaches, you guys do a ton behind the scenes to make sure that our students and our families are welcome back in the district, so I hope you know that the board does recognize all the work that you do, the patience that you have in the back-to-school time for the parents, as a parent, I'm going to thank you ahead of time, because it's been anxious for a lot of folks coming in for the first time to new schools, so I give you guys a lot of credit, and I also wanted to say that right now, the Jamesville Craig Milton game is at 1,288 votes, and the next closest is 519, and you can vote every single vote, which I have.
Just to piggyback on what Tracy shared, like getting ready, I didn't mention our admin assistants at each school, but it's amazing how the staff loses a school's office on Thursday, and she just piles of boxes and things that have been delivered over the summer and come back on Friday, and they've gotten distributed to where they need to be, and things are looking good, and then I know there's a lot of pressure to have everything ready for tomorrow and Wednesday's open houses, and all of the schools are looking great thanks to the work that everybody's doing at all of our schools.
One more echo of a thank you and a welcome, Rich mentioned we had Monday and Wednesday to welcome staff, both the new staff and all staff, and thanks to the board members that showed up, we had a nice turnout vote for Monday and for Wednesday, it was my privilege to say a couple words and talk to all the staff, it's probably the only opportunity to talk to that number of them, and I just really wanted to share how proud we are as a board of everybody that works for us, across all the departments and all the different buildings, and really that was the message, so we're excited, we're very, very proud, and we're here to help and here to support everybody that does their job, so. On that note, we will roll on. One committee that's had some activity recently is our finance committee, and John is going to share with us what we have been doing.
Thank you, Joe, the finance committee met on Tuesday, August 20th, there were two items on the agenda, the first item was the referendum communication, Rich and Ross, Rich and Ross, shared some important information that included key dates, the do's and don'ts as board members, ways to get information, when it comes to key dates, there's a list of different dates and locations, Rich will be making us aware of, but this is a reminder to try to attend the school, you were assigned to have their upcoming welcome back nights, they start this week or tomorrow, and we'll see the guests, if you can't attend, please let Carly go so she can notify the board so we can make sure someone is there representing the board. When it comes to the do's and don'ts, as board members, it's important to remember when serving as a board member, it should be informational and not advocacy, when not serving as a school board member, you are free to advocate as you wish for the referendum. Lastly, a good way to gather information is through the website, milton.paged12.wi.us, from there you can find a tab on the left side of the homepage that will take you to a page built for the referendum, this whole information including graphics, FAQs, of course, Rich and Ross would be available for any additional questions or concerns.
I'm going to pause you just for a second, John, because Carly did put that up on the, on the screen, and to make sure that folks know where that is, if you can jump back, Carly, to the district website, you can see there's two spots from here, there's the referendum 24 tab, or if you scroll down, and just scroll down, Carly, go to the referendum 24 box, if you click on either of those, it will take you to the referendum landing spot. On that referendum site, there's some great pictures of students and staff in action, we have a spot where you can download a flyer, that's kind of a one-pager front back that has key points about the referendum, there is a video that we won't share now, but a great video on Wisconsin school funding, that provides some of the background on what's been happening over the past few years with school funding in the state of Wisconsin, there is the actual ballot question that talks about a $5 million referendum beginning in '26, '27 for recurring purposes, consisting of ongoing educational programming staffing, there are some graphics that show what that means, and I think a key point on the graphic that has the blue bars is that our current two-and-a-half million dollar non-recurring referendum expires after the '25, '26 year, so the proposal that approved by the voters would kick in during the '26, '27 year, and would take the place of that expiring non-recurring referendum, and you can see from the photograph that that $5 million returning referendum that approved then becomes part of the base in years moving forward. Underneath that, it has our no rate history that shows that our no rate has stayed relatively steady over time, you can see the 10-year average was $8.44, this past year it was $7.49, so almost a dollar below that 10-year average, and our, our projection for this current year is continuing that downward trend at $6.70, and then you can see even first year of the referendum is approved in '26, '27, highlighted there, would be a projected 42 cent increase on the no rate, which would be equal to a $42 annual increase on the district's no rate for every $100,000 in property value, and the other important part of that is that our projections are that that would rise that 42 cents, or about $3.40 per month for every $100,000 in property value, but then would begin again to steady decline in the years after that. Also included on the website are videos and presentations from our community focus groups, open office 12th board meeting, and a whole series of frequently asked questions, so we encourage folks, if you're watching the board meeting tonight, or if you have a conversation with people, we want to make sure to get accurate information about the referendum out to folks, we'll be hosting a series of community information sessions, our first one is coming up on Wednesday, September 4th, at 6:30 PM at the middle high school library, so that's an open invitation to any community members to attend, we'll share some information and then answer any questions that folks have.
Alright, any other questions? Otherwise, John has one more.
I just wanted to say this looks really nice, thanks for doing this, and I've talked to dozens of people in the past couple weeks, and there's been a real, two common themes, one of them has been, how's it going to affect my taxes? And, I mean, that's kind of, I don't know, maybe that could be more problematic, it's very disponent, that's the bottom line, that's what they want. I'm also hopeful that if the exec chooses to report on this, that they will, in my opinion, have a less, this meeting better, and our article that looks unfortunate, I think, but also, people want to know, what have you been doing, you know, to be good stewards? I like this list of things that, you know, people can refer to, ways that we've been taking on these things.
I think where the rubber really hits the road on, have we been good stewards? Because we talk a lot about debt balance, we provide a really high-quality education opportunities for students, but we're also very fiercely responsible as a school district, and if you go to that, if you scroll down, Carly, to the no rates slide, it really reinforces two different things, reinforce, have we been good fiscal stewards, you can see that we have five years of the role now where our no rate hasn't decreased over time, and that's during the time when inflation has been extremely high, especially for the last couple of years, and the folks were watching the annual meeting earlier this evening, they saw that for next year, that is projected to go down by 2.4, 5%, so another example of how we are providing these great opportunities for students and has seen achievement, but doing it while being fiercely responsible as a school district, both of those things are really important to us, and we know that when the two-and-a-half million dollar non-recurring referendum expires, it's going to be extremely difficult for us to continue the programs and things that we have in place, without some additional revenue to be charged.
Alright, anything else on that? Otherwise, John has been.
Yeah, second item on the agenda was the annual meeting documentation preview, Ross just shared with us at the annual meeting, will be the opening head, if there's any questions, I'm sure Ross will be able to answer.
Alrighty, thanks, Johnny. And then we went on to new business, Julia is making her way to the podium, this is another chance for her to share with us her normal and cursory tasks, this is discussion and possible action on equitable services report, welcome, Julia.
Thank you, good evening. Yeah, so this is just required annual report, and the memo is up there, it was available for you to read through, but it's talking about our requirements that we have to provide equitable services for our students who are placed at frontally private schools. So annually, I meet with the principal of the private schools, this year we only had Rock Prairie, last year, remember, we had Rock Prairie and servant leaders, and servant leaders closed down mid-year, so we had to distribute the funds last year between those two private schools, and this year it's just Rock Prairie. So outlined in the memo are what is required by IDPA, so we go through that process during the annual meeting and talk about each of those components. So the meeting this year was in June, it went really well, same conversation, Martha at Rock Prairie voluntary school has been through this annually for years and years, and the services are going to stay the same, just like they have been for the last couple of years, the allocation for the amount of funds that we can provide is written in the memo, and it's based on the October 1 child count from the previous school year, so however many students we had October of last year, times the amount of funds that are allocated to us, which is determined by the state, not by us, is how much they have for an allocation, and then once those funds are used up for the school year, then services stop. So part of our conversation and consultation is around, okay, we want to make some services, we want our kids to get the intervention and support that we need, how best can we do that with this pot of money that we have? So that's really what our conversation is about, that's why the services look pretty similar year after year, because it's a great system that we have, and this year it's a little over $9,000, plus a little bit of carryover that we didn't use last year, the reason we didn't use it last year is because servant leaders, again, closed down, and we had a not allocation that we could carry over into this year. So a good amount of money, a little bit more than last year, a good amount of money for the services that can be provided for this year. The other part of the memo that's on there is the staff that will be serving the students at Rock Prairie this year, our speech and language pathologist at East, Donna Singer, is going to be delivering services at Rock Prairie, Daniel Marco is the school site who will be doing evaluations, Chris V at East will be the special ed teacher, who if there are any evaluations that she needs to do in terms of academic, she will be the one to support that, and then I service the ALIA, Mrs. Stewie sometimes comes with the ALIA as well, if there are students within the army of outbursts there, so otherwise, pretty straightforward, any questions to me?
Oh, you feel that the funds that are provided here are ample for the projected students that will be there?
Yes, we did run out one year, and that's because we provided some more reading intervention types of services, where the majority of the services are speech and language, the amount of referrals we get are mostly for speech and language needs, but we did have one student who had some pretty complex reading needs, and we provided some services just to kind of boost some of their skills, and when we do that, we have to use those funds for special ed teachers and speech and language pathologists, the funds are not a permanent program. So some of our conversation was around, do we want to continue to do that, do we not? And they, you know, it's happened before I was here too, it's just the need for the students that year, and, and having good conversations during the evaluation meetings, and when students come first, and those decision-making measures that sometimes, you know, funds run out, so.
So I was thinking, well, what if that becomes 20 students, what happens if that happens?
So then 20 times whoever the state allocation is, is what we would receive, and that's what we have to put aside from our.
Okay, so the 9,000 is not the cap, it's, it's just, it's just an estimate based on...
We're gonna have October 1 chap, yeah.
I need to accept the equitable service decision for this to send.
A second.
Thank you, and that's motion is seconded by Tracy to approve, or to accept the equitable service report as Julia has presented. Questions from anyone? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Julia?
Thank you.
Alright, that's the end of new business, Mr. Menace A is stacking report.
I make a motion to approve it, it's a very important thing.
Thank you, Rick's motion is seconded by Ed to approve the stacking report, does anyone have questions on it yet? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That clearly passes, gifts and donations summarized in board docs for us, I'll move to approve the gifts and donations we've had through the figure. John's motion is seconded by Rick to approve with gratitude the gifts and donations received by the district from our generous community. Questions from anyone? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That clearly passes. Meeting dates, Mr. Donovan?
Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is on Monday, September 8th, at 6:30 PM here in the PDC, we'll be back in our phone room.
Set up arrangement?
Arrangement for that one. We need to schedule an HR committee meeting for sometime in mid-September, between the two board meetings in September, if we stick to our usual Wednesdays, we could do that either on Wednesday, September 11th, or Wednesday, September 18th, do HR committee members have a preference to the 11th or the 18th?
It'd be after.
Yeah. Do you need to check with Jen? Yeah, it's, I'm worried considering, you know, tomorrow, with some different possible days, and folks are going to start with their availability, so.
Wednesday is on the 11th, so that's interesting.
It doesn't have to be the 1st of Wednesday.
Wednesday is a busy weekend when the school starts, there are quite a few meetings, so, but maybe Tracy, I'll talk to her a little bit.
And then we have, it was mentioned earlier by John, that we have the school open houses tomorrow and Wednesday, so board members, if you're available, we're going to have a poster board in the front office of each school, it's a great, great opportunity for board members to greet parents as they come in, I don't think there are some of our schools who stay in, and touch base with parents as they come in, that means it's a good place to hang out, but we also know that there are conflicts that board members have too, if you're not, somebody had mentioned to me that you're not going to be available, if you haven't mentioned that to me, let me know, we'll make arrangements to have somebody there at the office and greet people. And then we have our, also, we mentioned earlier, we have that community information session on Wednesday next week, that's Wednesday, September 4th, at the high school library, and that's a six-week, so it's a little, little post-op, it's not a regular board meeting, and there's not an expectation that all board members will be there, but if board members are there, we're going to ask that, attend those community information sessions.
Let's not forget the ice cream social meeting.
Yeah, what time is that ice cream social? Yep. Yep. 5:30. I thought it was around 5:30. Yeah. All set.
Thank you. I didn't have that, but I don't know, it's a, it's a good one.
All right, are we good on dates?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move with you.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.